I'm calling tonight's meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board to order. Today is, I think it's September 9th, 2025. We are meeting at Town Hall. My name is John Drooly. I am the current Chair of the Planning Board. Before we begin, I would like to ask, remind everyone that this is a public meeting and is being conducted in accordance to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. Please take a moment to silence any mobile devices or electronics for any interruptions. Anyone wishing to speak should come to the podium, wait to be recognized by the Chair, and state their name for the record before making remarks. Be encouraged respectful and constructive dialog during public comment periods. Thank you. We'll now proceed with the first item on the agenda, which is public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak about something that's not on the agenda this evening, please come to the podium and state your name. All right. Seeing no one coming to the podium, we'll take item number one on our agenda tonight. We have an approval not required. Would you like to?
Minutes?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I always forget the minutes. Paul?
Nope.
Tom?
Tom. Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the August 26, 2025 minutes as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Sorry about that. Okay, now we have approval not required. The applicant is Stephen Lopes. Melinda, please.
The plan before you meets all the requirements of an A and R, and I recommend endorsement.
You recommend what?
Endorsement.
Endorsement? As shown on the plan.
Without regard to buildability, zoning compliance.
I knew Howard would say that.
I wanted to, I could see it.
Nice. Any comments on the A and R?
No.
Can I get a motion, please?
So I move endorsement as the plan, of the plan as presented to us, without regard for buildability and whatever else.
Zoning compliance.
Zoning compliance, thank you. You didn't help me on that, Melinda.
Can I get a second, please?
Second?
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Second public hearing is a continuation. And we'll hear from the applicant first.
Hi, my name is Rafael. Sit down here with 683 Main Street in Falmouth. So at this point, I just came here to check with you guys if our green area is satisfactory for what you guys asked last time.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just very quickly. So the first item on the agenda is for a public hearing, a special permit for this application. As you remember, on the 22nd of July, you folks approved the application for the special permit with the parking in the front yard and within five feet of the property line, you closed the public hearing. You did ask us to draft a positive motion for the special permit. However, we've got one ready, but we've held off simply because the site plan review process is still ongoing.
Okay.
And we recommend that you sort of tidy those approvals up together at your next hearing. So what I would suggest is, you know, if the board is so inclined to move on from the public hearing, because that's already been closed, and move into the public meeting where you can talk about the site plan review applications before you and shown on the screen right now.
Okay. That's where we're at. We move forward, you're going to have a landscaping plan, and I believe there's some concern from the engineering department about your drainage.
So, yeah, one of the things that they come up today that is like on this line here, that's going to be where the swale is going to be, and you guys asked for a bunch of trees over there. So one of the concerns from the engineer from town was that trees is going to destroy this swale because the roots and everything else. So if there's like something else we can put over here instead of trees so it doesn't damage what we're going to be for the water drainage.
So we have, we have not been able to get a positive referral from the engineering department on your drainage.
Yes.
I understand there's some concern with your engineer about our engineer.
Yeah, it's being a back and forth from them.
So until that gets resolved, we cannot move forward. So whatever the Falmouth Engineering Department is requiring is what you'll have to have a plan to achieve that. Can I say it correctly?
Yeah, if I may, very quickly, and we apologize for not being able to have the landscaping plan up on the screen.
That's what I was waiting for, I wanted to see it, yeah.
We can, we can adjust that.
I forward that to you, right?
Yeah, we have it in the board's packet, and I can grab the stick and show it to you, but really quickly and for the record.
Looks like we're coming back at it.
The green, the plan that you've asked the applicant to submit shows where the landscaping would be proposed. One of the concerns within the engineering division's most recent referral, which is included in your packets, is the multicolored referral, indicates that there are plantings proposed along the west side of the property in that swale area, which would, which could potentially compromise the swale itself, which is sort of like, you know, depressed rock-filled area. And so the engineering division is recommending that trees and shrubs not be planted in that area because of the root system and the potential compromise of that drainage structure. So that's one of the components that would be helpful for you to cover with the applicant this evening, to determine if that is going to be a problem for you on the landscaping plan. So as you may remember, that you were concerned about the landscaping primarily in the front of the, of the site, but also within that western side. So I'm going to grab the stick and I'm going to try to get the landscaping plan up on the screen to show you.
Okay. I don't have it in my packet, so.
Take a quick look at this.
Before you start, I've never heard of a compromised swale. That's a new one. And what is the danger of a compromised swale?
Well, so my limited understanding of the stormwater infrastructure is that, you know, essentially the roots, well, the swale itself.
Yeah, I know swale.
It's a ditch.
As designed, is a very long ditch, basically. And so it's going to be filled with rock, and the concern from the engineering division is that the root system of the plantings within that area could compromise the swale in such a way that it doesn't function the way it's supposed to. So it has a certain surface area that collects water, allows it to drain, but also allows it to flow from the top of the site all the way to the, to the bottom of the site.
Do you have a question?
Okay. All right, any questions? Jim?
I would really like to get a landscaper's opinion on that, because I don't think I agree. I know what a swale is, the surface wouldn't run off, the roots are going to be below the surface, and they actually hold it together. And in my opinion, I think the engineering might be getting into landscaping, they may not have, I would like to know the engineer, first of all, the, they're talking about what's under the ground is going to affect the top of the swale.
Again, I'm just.
I'd like to hear, no, I'm not sure I agree with that, but if there's, if there's an engineer that also has a landscaping degree and wants to tell us you should never do this, but we need to put something on a property line here. It's really, really important.
Keep in mind that the engineering referral does defer to the planning board to make the ultimate decision of whether or not you want that landscaping there.
I believe it's similar when you have a tree that grows close to a sidewalk, and then the sidewalk gets disrupted and bubbles up, and, and because of the roots, they grow, and then it disrupts the sidewalk.
Can the swale be moved around?
Well, the roots for the tree are going to grow and be massive if you think of the tree roots.
Well, that's problematic. That's just saying we no longer put trees, not only in the front of the property, on the side. That's really tough.
I don't think it's necessary that you have to change the landscaping. There's other ways to revise it.
Yes, Charlotte?
Could I comment on that also? It really depends on the size of the tree. Probably all of us have had experience planting stuff, and the size of what you plant determines how problematic the roots might be wherever they are. So, because I see, if I'm reading this correctly, further, closer to the street, out of the swale now moving toward the street, there's a plan to put in dwarf azaleas. Azaleas are already not a very big plant, and these are even smaller than that, and they could be larger up there, but if you put in smaller, like arbovidia, I know they do not have extensive roots, it depends on what you plant, whether or not they have the strength, the roots to kick up any pavement or to create enough of a tangle to dam up the water. The water's going to run along the surface.
Okay. What about alternative plants like ornamental grasses? Just have those tall grasses like you got out of the year.
I need a clarification first. I cannot determine on this plan where the drainage is. Is it in the front corner or is it on the inside of the building?
The drainage goes right here.
The whole length.
The whole length?
Yeah.
And how wide and how deep?
All the way here, all the way down to, to dry wells back here. So that's going to be, that's going to be a big pitch. From here is going to be the highest elevation to all the way down here, which is going to be the lowest elevation because of the pitch that's going to go to flow the water until that goes to the dry wells.
Any other questions? So, go ahead, Charlotte.
I would like to thank you for the effort that you've made to respond to what our concerns are.
Thank you.
And really, we just want it to look good when you get done, and I'm glad that you want that, that also. The plan for the front, that looks good. That's nice. So maybe we'll know more about planting. What's this planting under the overhang? This part, here. What's that plan?
So this part over here?
Yeah.
So that's like a landscaper we have over there right now. So there's like a bunch of like small bushes and some, some moach. It's there already, so we have like some landscaping here already.
So that remains.
Yeah.
But what you're planting there at the front, you've made the entrance into the parking lot more narrow.
Yes, this is the part you guys asked for and over here as well. And then do all this sidewalk.
Okay, and you'll be coming back, it sounds like.
Yeah. Swale is like five to seven feet wide.
Yeah. That's pretty wide.
Any other questions? I have a question. Why is it that your engineer isn't designing drainage in the parking lot like we see on other sites?
So it's my understanding goes that they're being back and forth. My engineer talks to the engineer from the town, and he asks like, so how you want to get it done? So because they're, as far as I know, they're giving all the calculations, and the only thing that the engineer from the town says that this is not going to work. So one of the things that I can foresee, that I can understand is that if my engineer has a license, can make the calculations work, why the town is not accepting that and say that's not going to work? So it's been like, I guess there's a miscommunication or my engineer is not understanding what's going on, so I'm going to go to the bottom of it tomorrow.
We're going to try to get an answer for you in a second, but my question to you is why are you not doing drainage in the parking lot like most people do? I've never seen a plan where there's a drainage ditch on the side of the property to catch the water. I know that.
I still don't get it.
Usually the drainage goes in the parking lot with a grate, and maybe in the front and the back, and.
So because?
Never, never roll the landscape.
I don't know if you ever saw the law, the law, it's pretty straight, like unless if you tear the entire property out and make it work.
You wouldn't have the proper pitch, you don't believe?
It's just, it's pitched a little bit over this way. That's why we're trying to make this will go over here and then falls in the back. But another thing that the engineer from the town is saying is that like, we, I suggest you to take some part of the asphalt out, which is like, be honest, I'm feeling like that the entire town is, it's sort of forcing us to pretty much put the entire building down and then build back on.
We wouldn't ask you to do that, no.
We initially just wanted to renovate the entire, the interior of the property and make it livable for the population. Now we're like getting to a million other different stuff on the outside. I understand everybody's concern and why it's going, but at the same time, it's getting more expensive by the day with everything that's being asked for.
Right now, the town engineer agrees with this plan here?
No.
He doesn't?
No, does not.
He doesn't?
Does not.
So the town engineer doesn't want the swale. The only thing.
He doesn't want the tree.
He doesn't want the tree, that's the only thing.
The trees align with the swale, yes.
Yeah, that's the only issue.
No, it's not. If you read the whole engineering report, there is pages of things that are.
Yeah, there's more things to it as well.
Right.
It's math, it's, it's everything. It's the plants, it's, there's a lot that's not correct.
I'm sorry, what other than the plants? All we've heard so far is the plants. What's the everything else?
Well, if you look at the engineering referral.
Somebody going to tell us?
It lists it, and the math.
So one of the most important items are the four dry wells that are located at each corner of the, of the building. Best practice is that those dry wells are located 10 feet away from a foundation. So that's one of the chief concerns here. Rafael, would you scroll down a plan, I'm sorry, on the other tab that we've been working on?
Which one?
I think it's the third. Let me just, let me just come to the podium.
This?
I don't know how much is running off the property now.
I would like to know that also.
Okay. So what we're looking at here, there's a few things. So these leaching basins located at four corners of the building are essentially located too close to the structure. The proposal is to locate them close to the structure as shown in this detail here, and essentially create a liner on the outside of the foundation. The issue with that is that what you're seeing is a one-foot distance shown on a detail, but as you can see on the plan, it is very hard to tell if that one foot is actually shown accurately on the plan. So that's, that's a primary concern with those items. They are recommending that those be moved 10 feet away from the structure, right? We've already covered the vegetation that's located.
Hold on for a second, is the applicant doesn't want to do that, and that's what we're arguing about?
Nope, all I'm doing is summarizing the engineering referral.
I just want to say, I agree. I mean, I, the worst thing you could do is dump water right next to a foundation. I've been in business a long, long time, and especially because he's going to occupy basement.
Let's let him finish up, and then we can.
No, but I'm just wondering why, I think.
Well, let him finish.
I'm just going to hit the high notes.
Jed is trying to tell us what the engineering is.
It's okay.
Trying to get the bicycle.
So there's a calculation issue with Area C, which is the roof area. As you can see on the plan, it's, it's indicated at 1,300 square feet. In the calculations, it's apparent, according to the engineering referral, it's 1,412 square feet. So there's discrepancy between the actual calculation and what's shown on the plan. We've covered the dry well locations. They do have concern about the use of the polyliner, as well as the note that's shown on the plan, and I'm just going to zoom in so you can read it. Again, the clear indication on the drainage plan is that there's a concern with placing those items that close to the foundation. And so our engineering division has flagged that as saying, if there's a concern, that shouldn't be done. So then there's the swale, right? So if I'm reading the referral appropriately, there weren't calculations provided that indicate that the swale is going to be able to hold the amount of stormwater and be able to convey the amount of stormwater that's anticipated in a 25-year storm.
And is that from the parking lot?
From the parking lot and from the sky.
Okay, well, that goes on, okay.
Well, because you got to remember, this area in here is all vegetated. So the parking lot flow will eventually just hit grass, and it will eventually make its way to the swale.
I understand, that's the plan.
Yeah, and then there's the rest of that area.
Okay.
There's also concern about the, as the applicant mentioned, the flatness of the site. As you can see, the topography isn't, there aren't a lot of breaks in the site, so there's concern that stormwater that, or water that falls here, there's concern that it will actually make its way all the way over to the edge of the site and then be able to flow down the swale. So those are the high points. There's also new comments about math in the calculations and concern about the wintertime. So when, as you know, in this region, we don't necessarily get a lot of snow, but when we do get snow, it's in small amounts, it sometimes can freeze right afterwards, and sometimes we get rain events which actually clog up drainage and create flooding on site. So again, compound that idea of this site being as flat as it is, and there's cars that are parked here. If snow falls here, potentially creating a damming situation, that water won't be able to flow into the swale, and snow within the swale itself that may not allow water to flow into this area. Compound that with this area B, same kind of concept. If there's snow blocking any of these areas, water won't be able to get into the drainage and drain off the site. That's the basic premise of the engineering referrals drainage comments. I haven't covered everything, but those are the items that I've pulled out of key importance.
Okay. Thank you, Jed. Charlotte?
We pretty much have that all in writing, and it's color-coded so that we know which ones have been addressed and which ones are open. And I'm assuming that you have this also.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, you do. So that you know what needs to be done before we, we meet again, so that, that part's good. But I'd also like to underline that I'm pretty sure the whole board believes this is a really good project for the town, so we're not trying to discourage you.
Thank you.
We're just hoping it'll be a really great project, and that you'll be back having addressed these pretty soon.
Okay, Bob, you have any questions?
No.
Comments? Jim?
I think he's, I'm not sure, but I think he's just trying to save a lot of money by not having to regrade the site and just put a simple swale in and catch it, and avoid what I think is really good engineering, and I'm really concerned about that, especially going forward. He's, this is a non-conforming building, you know, it shouldn't have been, it should have been drained in the beginning. He's spending a ton of money on the building, it's time to do it right, or else we can't plant it and make it look it. We just have, have to accept the mistakes are there and carry forward, and I, I'm not comfortable with that.
So to be specific, what, what would you like to see?
Well, I think.
Did you disagree with the drainage?
No, I, I, well, I think that the, I'm not an engineer, but I don't want to pretend I am, but I, I can tell you I've solved an awful lot of wet basements by putting dry wells 10 feet away and having the water collected to them instead of pumping it back into basement. And I'm not an engineer, but if, if our engineers have that so concerned, and that's probably why he doesn't, I think I heard him, he doesn't want to have to break up the pavement, he wants to try to save all that money. And when we ask for a landscaping and a drainage site, those things are supposed to be coordinated, not compromised.
So just for clarity's sake, the first engineering referral that came from our engineering division did suggest that part of the western part of the site be pulled up for impervious surface removal, so essentially making it easier to drain the site because there's less pavement. That was just a suggestion on their part. That's, I think, what the applicant was referring to. They don't want to get into that type of situation. But, Mr. Chair, what I think you were referring to is, you know, typically in these types of situations, dry wells or leaching basins are typically just put in the, in the low point of the, of the parking lot.
Parking lot, correct.
To catch all of the water that flows within that area, and it just leaches into the ground. And that's typically what we see in the area. This is a different design, and so I think the applicant's struggling with that different design.
Well, I'm struggling with it also, because to do what is shown on this plan is going to be costly to begin with. But I don't know what the, what the grade is on the parking lot. This is not a, it's an existing site, so I don't know if they put a drain in the front, they put a drain in the back, if that would catch the water or not. If it was a new site, you could drain it, you know, grade it correctly.
Correct, correct.
It must be, if this is the west side.
Yes.
It must slope to the west side for anyone to think that this is going to work.
Right, it does, minimally.
But doesn't, water doesn't need much of a slope to go somewhere.
That's fair.
So.
But that, that creates the concern, especially in the wintertime, when we do get those messy storms, where those slush piles, be it three inches tall, can create drainage problems on the site because it doesn't have enough pitch to break through that. It simply will just sit on the site, and it won't drain. So that's the primary concern, at least that's what I read in the engineering referral that the applicant needs to fix. Or address.
Okay, I'm starting to understand it. In the future, please, we used to have full sets of plans, you have full-size sets of plans?
Yep.
We can have those again, because to look at the site plan like this, it's very hard to determine.
Sure.
What, what the scale is, so.
We're secretly trying to push you into digital plan.
Well, in the meantime, let's have some.
Pop them up.
Let's have some.
Yeah, Sue.
Two sets, one at each end, please.
We got it.
Pat, do you have any questions or comments?
I've got a problem with the drainage, whether it will be sufficient in, in the winter, for exactly the reasons stated, is the ice damming. We have that around our own house, you know, where it comes off the roof and it freezes. We have a quick drop in the temperature, and you've got an ice dam there, so it won't necessarily go into the swale. And depending upon what kind of storm we have, it could cause some damage in the basement apartment. So I don't know how you satisfactorily, totally seal that so it's impervious into the believed future life of this building. I don't know.
I think that's what engineers trying to explain to us.
I think so, too.
Has there been any grades shot here at all?
So.
I mean, I'm asking Jed, but, I mean, by the engineering, have they, they have any thing that's going on?
If I'm reading the plans correctly, the answer is yes. So in your application.
We're trying to make this work for you. Thank you. Not trying to make it not work for you. Thank you.
Like Charlotte said, we want it to happen.
On the site plan, sorry, I thought they were on the site plan, in the drainage plan, I believe that there are spot elevations shown on the plan. But that is also very challenging to read. As you, as you can tell, and it, you know, as you've probably seen, this plan is extremely busy, and it is very difficult to determine exactly what the symbols mean, so I've got three S symbols on this plan for the drainage plan, and I see no key indicating what those are. So it's challenging, but you can see in the legend that there are some existing spot grades and proposed. grades and proposed spot grades shown on the plan, and that's what the engineering, our engineering division, will use to determine whether or not the flow will actually get to the west side of the site. I think for, if I read the engineering division's referral carefully before I came to the meeting, I think these are fixable problems. One thing I think that the applicant will need from you, because the engineering division has deferred it to you for your decision, is whether or not you're okay with the landscaping within that swale area. Not necessarily within the swale itself, but in the area where the swale is located. Are you okay with these azaleas and the magnolia trees? Charlotte's got it.
Charlotte? If it works out that it protects the swale, and that's important, yes, I am. So it depends, but it seems that he's got a lot of things here to take back to the engineer. He'll be back, but I ask you, winter in New England can be sloppy.
Yes.
We all deal with it. We get, you know, we get on our boots and we still live through it, and we wouldn't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good. He's trying to retrofit a building for residential use, and we'd like him to be able to do it. It may not be as perfect as it would have been if it had been designed for this from the ground up, and I don't think we should expect it to be. I do think we should expect the applicant to address the comments he's been given. And I guess you're prepared to do that.
Yeah, I just think sometimes a flat piece of land is harder to drain than something that has a nice pitch to it or different grades. And talking about drainage in the middle of a parking lot, go to wood lumber after a rainy day. You got, I joke about why MCA has already put their pond there, their pool there, because it is, it's, even in the best scenarios with engineering, it can still go wrong, so I hope these two can get together with the guys at the town and theirs and come up with something that will work. And like you said, it may not be perfect, but it should be better than what it is.
Jim?
Well, I think a combination of moving the drywells away from the building and have impervious material around it and pitch the water to it, but I'd like the engineers to do that. I'm not used to seeing drywells right up next to a building. And I, the ones, all the ones I have in my extensive career have been nothing but problematic, especially when you have an occupied basement. And I, I think we're trying to save the structure, but I don't think we have to save the parking lot. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Pat?
Azaleas are fine for me. I'm not sure about trees. It depends upon their root structure.
Okay. Paul?
Yeah, I read the engineering report, too. They have problems with the delineation and so forth. And there are, there's only one contour going across here, so it's a little hard to tell what is really going on. I agree that the drywells close to the building are not a good idea, but the frequent drywells, about six of them shown on the site, so I wouldn't be so worried about the runoff into the swell area. However, I noticed they're putting in four magnolia trees in that area. I have two magnolia trees, they're black and brown, and they're bigger than the house right now. So those things get really, really big. And I don't know if that's appropriate there, but that's a different issue. But I think we should respect the engineering comments on drainage and see if we can resolve that issue. And there's a number of things thrown out, from swell areas to moving drywells, increasing drywells, and I think we should take a good look at it and see what the engineering department recommends.
Tom?
Not much more to add. I'm in agreement with all the concerns that were raised.
Okay. So let's just work on one issue. The design for the drainage for the water alongside the building, if that works, and we don't have trees in there, are you okay with that, Charlotte? Bob?
Yeah.
Jim?
I mean, is that, I guess, I guess the pavement's so valuable, we should probably save it. Yes, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Pat?
Yeah.
Paul?
I think these are fixable problems. I don't think it's a-
I'm just trying, I'm trying to narrow it down a little bit if we can here. Would the board be acceptable to have the drainage in this area here if we don't have trees in that area? You know, you mentioned four trees that really get too big, and if they were, if it works, would you be okay with the drainage to go that direction?
I think the swell area works fine with the trees there. I don't see that as a major problem.
Okay. Well, it may be a major problem if they get too big.
Exactly.
Which was your point?
The magnolias, like mine, they're too big.
Okay. Tom?
Yeah, if you're, I'm okay if you remove those.
Okay. And I didn't read the whole engineering report. Is the engineering department saying that the water will not get to that swale, or they're not saying either way?
They're concerned that it may not, because they haven't seen, they haven't been shown that it will.
Because there's no grades that show it? Okay, that's what I, that's what I thought.
No contours.
So there hasn't been a demonstration that water can actually make its way all the way over that.
Okay.
There's a drainage map that shows the drainage area, but there's no proof that the water will actually get to that spot.
Okay. So second question, the drainage for the roof runoff being so close to the building. Now, the applicant is showing that they're going to put a barrier between the foundation and the water to prevent it from penetrating into the basement. Go ahead, Charlotte. Because if not, then they're going to have to move it 10 feet out from the building.
I'm definitely not an engineer. So I'm not going to comment on that.
Okay.
I'm wondering, ordinarily, by the time something gets to us, we don't see this number of engineering issues, and, at all, you know, because the engineers are going to deal with that. We're not expected to be engineers. So I'm wondering, why did it come back to us tonight?
Well, so the primary reason is because of the landscaping plan. What we're trying to do is move the applicant through the process, and if we keep delaying based on the drainage, and one of the elements of the drainage is a suggestion to remove the landscaping from the drainage area, the applicant is, really should know, should they be considering removing that landscaping. Last thing we want them to come before you is to say, oh, well, the drainage is all set, well, now you're going to change the landscaping.
Okay, so that's a question we probably can respond to.
Okay.
Okay, I'll respond first, because I'm way at this end. Yes, that's okay.
Well, that's kind of what I thought our only talking point was going to be tonight, was the green on this plan.
Right.
And whether we're going to put a lot of trees or not, and that was the question, would the trees impede the absorption of runoff?
Right.
And I think I would be perfectly fine with grasses or other plants that don't have roots that are going to disrupt the hot top on the next property to it.
Okay.
And still not compromise the swale.
Jim?
I would move the drains. I think we're trying to save pavement, and I don't think it's a good idea.
Move the drainage from there?
Away from the house.
Well, we're not talking about the roof drains now, we're talking about, are you okay with this heavy hair?
The green.
The green. As his drainage system, if it works.
I would, I don't think so. I, from the comments I've heard, it sounds like he's trying to save money by not, there should be, I think it could be better used with the proper drainage and maybe some impervious materials and having the landscaping that we're asking for, because we're given a special permit and help him through, and he doesn't want to do, he wants his cake and eat it too.
Okay.
All right. Can I say something?
Just a minute, please. I'm working down the row here, then we'll get together with you. Tom?
I'm okay with the way it is.
Paul?
No more.
I'm okay with the way it is. I'm concerned about a wet basement if we, well, we're-
Right now, we're just talking about the drainage on the side of the building there. Okay, yes, sir.
Just trying to explain here, I'm not trying to save any money. I'm here to do what has to be done, but, like, there's a million things that are being forced to us to do that I don't see enough reason why. This is my point. Not trying to save money, of course, saving money is fine until you break even or lose money on a deal. So it's just, just trying to clarify that.
Okay. And we have guidelines we're supposed to go by.
Mm-hmm.
Whether it's a new structure or-
I got it.
-or an existing structure.
That's why I'm here.
Okay. Jed, do you think it would help if his engineers shot some, took some readings on the parking lot to see where the grade is?
Certainly, certainly, but-
Because in my mind, it would help determine whether this will actually work or not, what he shows on the plan.
Yeah.
Or whether or not we're just going to have to require a couple of-
Drywells.
You know, drywells.
Right.
In the parking lot, front and back or side or whatever. And if that's the case, if he has to put drainage pit in the front or in the back or both, he could also run his roof drains to that also at the same time.
Make them bigger, have them do both.
Well, that's why, right, but I want to find out, first of all, if, there aren't any grades on this plan. We need to have some grades. Do you understand that? We need to have your engineer shoot some grades on the parking lot, so we can see what the grade is, what the pitch is, whether any kind of drainage you're going to do is going to work correctly or not.
I'll talk to him about that.
May I make a suggestion? So his engineer has already met with our engineering department, and it's been back and forth, I think, three or four times now. I think that it might be a good suggestion for their engineer to go through the engineering referral and respond to each issue specifically, and correct it, and address each issue, because this has been back and forth so many times, and every time they met with them already, and it's not getting fixed.
Did they meet with them on site?
They met with them in their office.
Okay.
And they went over the plans.
Okay. Well, we have to do this anyway. So have your engineer address what our engineer, the questions are, and shoot some grades, and put them on a plan so that we can read them, and the engineering department can read them. So we can determine whether this actually work or not, and if not, then we're going to recommend something else to you. You know, we have not only the use and the goodwill here, but we have safety to be concerned about, too.
Sure.
So, and then, yeah, it's going to be a great project, and you're going to be very happy, as will the town.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just for clarification, I didn't follow the landscaping within the swale area. If you would like him to remove the magnolia trees that are currently there, yes, remove the magnolias? Is that what I heard? So there are-
I think that, yes.
Yes.
Yes?
The azaleas are fine, because those are bushes, and likely that root system is not going to grow to the size of a magnolia tree. Perhaps would you like them to extend the azaleas down the swale in place of the magnolias that are currently there?
Yes.
I would like the engineers to think about the issue before we say do that.
Question my preference.
Again, they deferred it to you. So their recommendation is that you wouldn't have trees within that swale area.
Any trees.
Correct. Now, I don't consider an azalea a tree. But if I'm wrong, let me know. So if the azaleas are okay, then at least the applicant is aware, and they can, they can potentially replace those magnolias with azaleas, so that you have some vegetation on that side.
Right. I think we have agreement on that.
Okay, great. Just for the applicant. And the front, the front landscaping is appropriate?
Yes.
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 Very good. Thank you.
So resolve the engineering comments and shoot some grades and get them on a plan. Then we can determine whether the drain's going to go. Okay?
And then, John, are we continuing this to the September 23 meeting? Is that likely to be okay?
It should be.
The applicant? September 23?
Continuation to the 23rd?
Continue to the 23rd.
23rd, if that works for the applicant.
That's what I was looking in his direction, seeing if that was going to be okay.
Is that two weeks?
Yep. Okay, because we've got on this deadline of September 30th, so we might need an extension for the decision.
Yeah, for the, for the decision, yes.
Yeah.
The deadline decision.
So you might want to give the staff an approval for an extension and work with them as to how long that extension should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll see you in two weeks. Next, we have Mr. Adams. Tom, do you have anything to read, Charlie?
I do. Public notice for this project was published 8/22/25 and also 8/29/25, and 15 of butters were notified by regular mail.
Thank you. For the applicant?
Just a question. Seth, Harry and, Harry, your father?
Tom.
Harry Thomas?
Yeah. Tom Adams.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm thinking, oh, you're in for Seth.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But is Harry Seth's dad?
No.
No. Okay. Okay, so I can stay, because I would have had to refuse myself.
I got you, yes. For the record, my name's Seth Adams.
Not in order.
It's my brother Nathan. He and I are the owners of, along with my dad Tom, are the owners of Katama Somo Realty LLC. My brother's the owner of Katama Somo. Together, we own the property, 494 Thomas Landers Road, and operate. It's the home of Katama Somo, along with a few rental bays. And I was in front of this board in 2000, I think, '22, and we permitted, asked for permission to build, and built, and occupied this building here. And it's been a successful venture. And we are, our business is growing as well, my brother's business as well as mine. I'm in the construction business. And so we are here to permit this building, a 36, 3,700 square foot building, broken into four storage bays, two for rent, two for owner-occupied. No plumbing is planned, no bathrooms, and it'll be storage heat only, minimal electricity. And we feel like we meet all of the requirements, we're well under lock coverage. I won't read every single one of the data points, but we're, we feel well within jurisdictional right, and we think the project is extremely fitting for the area. I'm happy to flip through. I've got some diagrammatic pictures as opposed to, I mean, I have drawing, drawings as well, but the diagrammatic picture, I think, you know, picture's worth a thousand words type of thing. Oh, here we go. So this, this elevation here with these two overhead doors, this would be the facing Thomas Landers Road, with these two other bays facing inwards to our yard. Building is 24, 25 feet tall, real simple metal building to match. This shows a dark roof. It will be a white roof. It'd match all the other buildings already on our site. And so we're here to ask for site plan approval. I did get all of the comments from the different boards. I'm here to, most of them were no comment. We did get a few comments from the engineering department. I did get the comments this afternoon, so I can address them. I'm not sure if I can to the board's complete approval, but I will try.
Well, I think we have a, looking for Marine Environmental Service, Fire Department, and the engineering department.
We have the engineering department.
Well, you just received this afternoon, we have not had a chance- Well, you received this afternoon. We have not had a chance to review it.
I got it. I understand.
We received it same time you did.
I got it. Okay.
Correct?
Yeah. And I can summarize quickly the engineering issues. And they're minor, in my opinion. They're, again, it's drainage related. I think there's some small adjustments that they need to make to the drainage calculations.
I would like to talk through that a little bit. I understand the comments, but I'm not gonna necessarily refute them, because I haven't actually had the opportunity to speak to the town engineer. I happen to be an engineer. But I am not the engineer of record, so I will not speak for my engineer. But a couple things that I just struggle with when I step back and have some logic. For one, we did provide a drainage map showing the pitch towards the basin. That's a drainage map, my understanding of it, my definition. But if not, and it needs to be something else, fine. I... This is an impervious site. Dirt, gravel, the grades as it currently stands.
Impervious?
I'm... Excuse me.
Okay, I thought you meant pervious.
Thank you for the...
Please, this, that would really make it confusing.
Yes.
Especially if it said dirt and gravel.
It is a pervious site as it stands. There is extremely small amount of grading that we are planning to doing. Essentially, just putting the catch basins in, and doing slight bit of grading to pitch the water to the basins. And we're putting a drainage system in at my behest, frankly, in a gravel parking area. Now, I get it for the roof runoff. I understand, from a logic perspective, totally get it. But I... The fact that we're doing it at all blows my mind, frankly. But we're doing it, because that's what it says to do. But it says that it doesn't conform to the standards, and I can't find on the website of the town a file of the standards. I don't know what they are. I'd like to have a copy of them. Because I struggle. I read the engineering data. It doesn't... The calculations, excuse me, that we provided to the engineer here. And...
I think you could call the engineering department, and they would...
Yeah, so I'm just talking through it now. I realize I'm gonna have to add for continuance. I do want to lay the groundwork for the theory here in the project. I think that it's important. But like I said, I haven't had the opportunity to speak to them. And I will through my engineer, not direct. I think that just is better, more professional, and reasonable. But other than that, I don't think the engineering department, or any of the other departments, frankly, have any issues with our project. And we think it'll be good addition to what we already provide, which is a mix of contractor rental bays. We rent to some local businesses, and we rent to the Steamship Authority. We get some businesses out of neighborhoods, and get them into spots where they should be. And we operate in an environmental, excuse me, an industrial area. And this is just simple, very simple, straight storage building.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Yeah.
We'll go questions now, Tom? Any questions?
You said two will be rented, and two would be owner occupied. Yep. And just a comment, I like that it's a pervious surface with the gravel driveway, because water goes back into the ground and back into our freshwater aquifer.
Yeah.
Yep.
Paul?
No comments.
I agree with Tom's comments.
Jim?
You said these are unheated structures, did you say that?
No, I didn't say they're unheated. I said there's no plumbing.
Okay, there's no plumbing?
Yeah.
Are they heated?
Um, we're...
You don't know yet.
We're... Wanted to leave that open.
Okay. I have no problem with it on gravel field.
Yeah, I just see where... I can understand the confusion with the engineering comments, because it's almost like you didn't look at what you proposed.
Well, he goes on, in comment 2, in the grading and drainage section, in comment 7B, the values C allowed are 1 and .4.
Right.
One being for impervious, which would include gravel parking. That... That defies logic to me.
Yeah, that's what I had a problem with.
And if the standard is written that way, I mean, I can't argue if that is a standard, and it's been adopted, and voted on, and approved, okay. But if this is...
Well, maybe it's a misprint, so...
This is why I would... I want to understand that. Because what I think that will end up meaning, the way I read this, is that my drainage system will be two and a half times bigger than it currently is. Which...
Yeah, we understand. So...
Is a tough pill to swallow.
Well, you have time to talk to them about it.
Yes.
Charlotte?
I'm familiar with that site, because I've been there for different things over the years. This will fit right in. And I agree that a landscape plan isn't necessary. There are trees between this building and the road where they're planning to put it anyway, and they keep the whole site pretty tidy.
Industrial site.
Yep.
Okay. Jed, are we gonna continue this? Because we don't have the referrals.
Correct. Yeah. I think a continuation to the 23rd, subject to us providing a positive motion. Because I do think that these are minor issues that can be cleaned up relatively quickly. And I think you can be in a position to approve the plan as presented. There are three things that you've touched upon here that I'd just like to cover before you move on. The whole idea of a landscaping plan. So technically, if you were going to grant a waiver for the landscaping plan, we would need a letter. So it would be good to indicate to the applicant, if you're willing to grant that waiver for the landscaping plan, send that message so that we can get that letter, put it on file.
Letter from the applicant.
Correct. Just requesting that waiver of the landscaping plan. Although I don't think it's going to be an issue here, we can reach out to the Marine Environmental Services, just because it's in, within the Wildlife Order, the Wildlife Overlay District. So we want to make sure that, you know, we dot our i's and cross our t's. So we're happy to reach out, see if there's any issues here.
Okay.
I don't believe that it's subject to the coastal pond overlay district. I think this is an industrial use, and that's clearly not something that would be captured within that overlay district. So those are the three items that I had for the board. So we're happy to draft a positive motion for you, if you're comfortable and get you ready for the...
So even if they're in that district, if they don't have any bathrooms, does it make a difference?
Say that again?
Even if they're in the overlay district, they don't have any bathrooms with that?
Coastal pond?
Coastal pond, right.
Yeah, I mean, coastal pond isn't just flow from, you know, wastewater. It's anything that goes into the groundwater. But again, this is such a small site, and it's a... Like I said, it's an industrial use. And coastal pond overlay clearly says commercial property.
I just wanted to ask that question.
For sure.
And they're still awaiting referral from the fire department?
Right, so that's the other thing. I mean, it's a tight site. Again, I don't anticipate that being an issue, but, you know, we just want to make sure that the fire department's comfortable with being able to get on the site if they need to.
Yeah, I mean...
In theory, there's a lot of wood there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I mean, that's the one that... But they come and they visit a lot. They come and do inspections. Got a good relationship, I'm comfortable with their comment. Yep.
So it's really just getting all of our ducks in a row.
Yeah.
So are you guys good with a positive referral?
Sure.
Definitely. Okay.
And see them again on the 23rd?
See you on the 23rd.
I can connect with you on exactly what I need to do.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a couple of planning board discussion items, some DBA referrals.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you remember from the previous meeting, we have two... Well, actually, from the previous meeting, we started talking about 809 Sandwich Road. So I'm just gonna pull it up on the screen. That is a comprehensive permit application with the Board of Appeals. They've asked for your input as a referral to their process. This is an application for 36 units on the site that's shown on the screen. So as you know, it is the former Smithfield Farm Horse Farm. That proposal, as I'm going to call up here, includes the following. So shown on the screen are, or is the layout of the 36 units. There will all be duplex structures with the exception of these two buildings on the front, which front on Sandwich Road, Ashville Road is over here. So you're looking at this portion of the site. That's essentially a duplex that's cut in half, and each one of the sides will be located on either side of the driveway. Melinda has put together essentially a summary of each one of these sites. It will hopefully help me with that, because I can't remember exactly the details. But we wanted to go over some of the details that you had asked about at the previous meeting, such as number of affordable units, what those AMIs look like, and then some other characteristics of the site that might be important for you to develop a referral to then send to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, so the lot is 4.65 acres, which equals out to about 7.7 units per acre. It's going to be a proposed private driveway, we assume. And we don't know the length of it. It wasn't shown. We couldn't find it on the plan. But it is 22 feet wide. There's gonna be an innovative alternative septic system. There's a little open space shown on the plan where the leaching area is going to be, but we don't know the actual size of that, and how much, what it will look like, pretty much. As Jed said, there's 36 rental apartments. There's going to be 90 bedrooms total. There's 13 affordable units. So I can go through the breakdown of the AMI with you. There's gonna be eight two-bedroom units at 80% AMI. And those are the lowest rate for rent, and that's $1,885 a month. And then there's one three-bedroom at 80%. There's one two-bedroom at 100%. There's one three-bedroom at 100%. There's one three-bedroom at 110%. And there's one three-bedroom at 120%. And that rent is $3,281. And it's broken down in the packet information that I gave you. I was just reading it out, because it's just easier.
Could you say again what the rents are for the market rate?
There's... I don't have the market rate rent. I just have from the affordable unit rent.
Ah.
And it ranges from $1,885 to $3,281.
Is that with or without utilities?
That is, I believe, without utilities?
Yeah, it's without.
Yeah. There are 94 parking spaces proposed. 72 are required. There are three handicap spaces, and 10 guest spaces included in that whole calculation.
Are there any handicap units?
They... You know, I don't know about that one.
No, I don't believe that there are any proposed as fully accessible. But my understanding is because it's a rental property... Again, John, you might know better than I here. There are a certain number of them that are required to be of a certain group, Group 1 and Group 2. I believe Group 2 is the more... How do I put this?
Accessible.
Yes, the more accessible level, and there will be a certain percentage. I think there's 5% that have to be in Group 2. But I don't know that for certain.
Okay.
And the applicant has requested, let's see, seven waivers. A lot of them have to do with the zoning board of appeals. The waiver that they're requesting that would have impact with the planning board is from site plan review. But the other waivers that they have asked for are regarding occupancy permits, one house per lot, maximum lot coverage. 20% is allowed, and they're proposing 22.8%. Setbacks, so the front yard setback proposed on, for the units on Sandwich Road, those units are supposed to have a 35-foot setback, and they're proposing a 23.1-foot setback. And their side and rear setbacks are actually more than what is required. They're 15 feet rather than the 10 required. And they've also added, asked for a waiver from the street opening permit, which I don't know what the details are in that specific waiver request, but...
Expend.
Yeah. So that's the summary.
Okay, thank you. Tom? Start this end to your left.
Will all these units go to our safe harbor?
Yes, because it's...
Sorry. Go ahead.
Because it's a rental property, and they've satisfied the requirement of 40B for a certain percentage, all of the units will count towards the SHI.
And will these units be on this year's production plan?
Yes, if they're... If the comprehensive permit is issued within the calendar year, yes. If not... Should we pause? I love that ringtone. That's great.
Rikings.
If the comprehensive permit is not issued in this calendar year, it will go into 2026.
And it's January to January, our production plan?
It's a 12-month period, if...
When does it start?
My memory is correct. So it depends on when you actually claim safe harbor, and you...
Okay.
Yeah, so you would take, I believe, a year period, and essentially demonstrate to the state that you've created the number of units within that year period.
Okay, great, thank you.
Paul?
I had some extensive comments on this project two weeks ago. I think seven or eight of them. And the ones that still concern me are the road access on Sandwich Road. I think that's a major problem. Another one is, I would like to see the explanation for the underground wastewater system. If you look at the drawings 11, it shows it along the... A nice system there. And it looks like, if you look at drawing 5, it looks a little different there. And it ought to be explained.
So you're talking about this right here?
No, it's different.
As shown on the screen, Paul?
That's on 5, up at the upper right-hand corner.
Right, so...
And if you look at 11, it has a whole series of tanks on the underground wastewater system.
Which is, I believe, this area right in here. These are the trench, trenches for the septic system.
So your system is up in the upper right.
You're referring to this one?
Yeah.
So are you saying that the detail doesn't match what's shown on the plan?
Are there two locations of drainage for septic, or is there one?
No, the septic system was...
Look at sheet 11. Look at sheet 11.
Sheet 11. 11.
See, in the upper portion of that, it shows a detailed wastewater system, referring to as a subsurface sewer system profile.
Yep.
I don't know how that relates to what they're trying to do on sheet 5.
Okay. I get what you're saying.
I think you need to explain what they're doing there, and how that ties in with that area on sheet 5. But you mentioned the lower left-hand side. It's very confusing the way they show that.
They're recycling tanks for the denitrification. That's what they're for.
Right. And it's a series of connected tanks.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Which I believe is shown here, this up in...
It goes through a series of tanks, gets pumped back to the original tanks.
Right.
And then goes back through again, which gives a chance for the hydrogen to be removed naturally.
Yeah, I was hoping for a note up in this section.
That looks like that's drainage up there.
That looks like drainage as well. Yeah, so we have...
I think you need to come in and explain that.
Drainage lines.
That's why I've been... We need full-size plans in here. It's hard to read off these small plans. It's difficult.
So just so we're clear, this is just a referral. So you would not receive full-size plans from the zoning board of appeals? If you... If you do need them for the meeting, we can ask them to borrow them, and we can bring them down for the meeting.
Okay.
So, it sounds like in the future, you'd like to see those, those full-size.
Would be great, yes, because this is, there's a lot of complication here.
Sure.
Jim?
This is the lip we talked about last meeting, right?
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
Paul was...
Yeah, the last item is that fence in the swell area up north. They say retaining wall with a fence on, on top, it says by others. I think we need a better description of what's going on up there.
This modular block retaining wall note here, and this is the wall...
No drawing, it says by others.
Does that mean it's existing?
No.
No, that's...
It's a proposed retaining wall.
And who would be the others? That's what I think is...
Yeah, it would likely be another engineering firm that designs that retaining wall. Yeah, that's pretty typical.
Okay. Sorry, Paul interrupted you. Any other questions or comments?
That's enough.
For a start.
I still don't know if there's a basement under these.
Let's go there.
We couldn't tell last time, I think.
I asked, and I...
There's no basement. There's a foundation, basement planned. It's only the foundation, it's like a crawl...
That's what I thought I saw, right.
Yeah, it's a crawl space.
Crawl space. Okay, so then my question is, where in the world are the residents going to store anything? There are no storage units anywhere. No basement that they can store anything. I think my comment would be that they're putting too much on the site.
Too dense.
Yeah, too dense.
Okay, so you would like to see storage?
It's got to be some kind of storage for the residents.
Okay.
You've got thirteen units here that have no storage.
Okay.
You've got supposedly a play area that's going to be where the septic is treated, my understanding.
It would be, oh, yeah, it would be on top of the space.
And a drainage swale there, I believe we were told, which you cannot use as a play space.
So, it's a, it's a proposed by retention area, so I'm sure that we can go to the detail. I want to limit the amount of scrolling up and down, but we can make sure that we address concerns related to children playing in that area.
Correct.
And potentially landing in the swale.
Correct.
Or the retention area.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Because presumably, there are going to be children if you have two- and three-bedroom areas here. With the buildings being so close to Sandwich Road, well, guess what? They're very close, and there's no waiting space there for the children, for the school bus. So, there's no safety. So, it's a big safety issue.
So, they've created this pavilion area, which would be the waiting area for at least the, the children who are going to be riding the bus, if you will. But there is obviously stacking area for parents who are going to be in cars.
And the bus is going to turn in there to pick the children up?
No, I don't believe it would turn in there. Would, I mean, I can't say for certain, but I can imagine the bus turning into here. I think it would pick it up, the children.
Well, it makes no sense for the kids to be waiting in a pavilion area off the road where they're going to be picked up. Just, it's unsafe. The whole thing is unsafe there for schoolchildren.
Are you saying you'd want the pavilion closer to the road?
Yeah, I'd want it, maybe to take the place of one of those units there, too.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Or maybe, or maybe shorten.
Agreed.
This is a divided entrance with a, with a center median. You could squeeze this a bit and then throw a pavilion or a, a bus shelter perhaps on the side here that's closer to the road.
That would be okay, too, but considering we're also thinking, at least down at this end, that there are too many units in there. It's too crowded.
Okay.
Lose one of the units and use it for a bus shelter. Now, that's being, kind of asking too much. I understand that.
No, it's not.
Nope, okay. Well, back me up, John.
We can ask. We, we get to ask.
So, there were a number of things. I mean, they've got this lovely doggy park there. What about a children's park? Yeah.
Yeah, I think the intent was, this would be sort of the, call it the human area, and this would be the four-legged area.
Mm-hmm.
I, I would like to see those two areas co-mingle. I'm a four-legged owner.
Yeah.
But there's all, there's all kinds of stuff in those two areas that they need access to.
Right.
Okay.
Not just open space.
And they do have a proposed play area right here. I'm not sure if you saw it, but there is...
Actually, I didn't. The doggy park is bigger than the play area.
As well it should be. Anyway, moving on.
Any other comments?
Those are my comments right now.
All right, Jim?
This is the lip we talked about last week, right?
Yes, it is.
And who is the developer?
It's Northland Development.
I'm all set. I was, I thought, I've heard about this. I don't know about it. I don't disagree with all the comments, but this is a lip, right? So, our team has already been through with your whole staff and zoning and said, this is a compromise. We've gotten us this far, and you're just asking us what we think.
Correct.
Okay, I'm okay with what you guys done so far.
Paul?
I had comments, of course, I always think of things after the meeting, and I sent to Jeb, and he answered me on a Sunday, which, but anyways, my, my concerns were... I want you to get some overtime, you know, time and a half.
Sure.
The Thomas Landers Road, between Thomas Landers and Carrot Shop, it's only quarter of a mile, and you have all those heavy trucks coming out of Thomas Landers all the time. I come out of Hatchville just about daily, and that's a real tough place to get in and out of between those two areas there. So, I think there's going to be problems with the number of vehicles that are going to be traversing in and out of this area here. And then the other thing I brought up was something that we talked about when we were writing the comprehensive plan, was the quality of buildings. And we talked about making buildings in the future more resilient and more energy efficient. And I asked Jeb about whether these were going to have solar panels, and the answer was no, and I started getting into hers ratings, you know, is there anything about that, that these houses should be pretty much built to net zero? Because we are trying to build a more resilient and renewable communities, and this doesn't fit any of that. So, I would like to make a comment on that, that here we're trying to build for the future, and the future is solar panels and heat pumps, and I didn't see any of that.
All right, thank you. Charlotte?
I agree. I think the site is much too crowded. This was being likened to the, the development that went in on twenty-eight A going up into Katomet, um, just beyond the post office in North Falmouth, and where, but I go by those frequently, and they're about thirty to forty feet apart, whereas these are nowhere near that. These are, I think it says eighteen feet apart, that's it, but I can't really read it, the number's so tiny. But the, this is a very crowded site, and it would seem you could alleviate some of the problems. It wouldn't have to be as close to the road. If the site were less crowded, you would have more room for the children's pavilion if it were less crowded. There's an attic indicated for, if you look at the plans, but there's no access to the attic. So, if there were a door into the attic, you would have some storage.
Yeah.
It's like it's trusses, but...
Yeah, they're trusses, so you would...
They can still have access to the attic.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a fire code, you have to have access to the attic.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a scuttle.
You mean that will be corrected anyway?
Well, not, not for use, not for storage or anything.
It won't be pulled down seriously.
The panel you push out of the way, and you've got to put a ladder up so a guy can get up or a woman can get up and do the electrical work.
Oh.
And it's just access.
Yeah.
Or cases of fire.
Yeah, fire.
So, I just wanted to try to get to, sorry, try to get to the idea of what is, in your opinion...
Could I just add one?
Oh, sorry, I apologize.
Are these projects not required to have a landscaping plan?
No, they are. They are, and that would be part of the process with the zoning board of appeals.
Oh.
Unless, of course, they are allowed to not submit one, but they should submit one, yes. In fact, I know the zoning board of appeals is very focused on that because what they're trying to achieve is, they allow, they want to allow folks to develop their properties, but not at the expense of the abutters, right? So, they want to try to create as much of a buffer between this new development and the existing developments near, next door, and so they really look for as much of a buffer as possible.
This is an amazing change in character for the existing neighborhood.
I agree.
Amazing change. You'd need an enormous buffer to really, you know, separate those, or you would have to give it more space within this development to begin to make it neighborly.
Okay. Tom?
Can I ask a couple more questions?
Of course.
Where are the dumpsters, and can a plow turn around in there?
So, they have shown a fire truck coming in and out, so the likelihood of a, of a plow truck being able to get in and out is high. But again, this would be a private development, so they would be responsible for their own snow plowing. Dumpsters on the site...
Probably have rubbish pickup at the, at the street.
At the street, yeah.
Because it's private, okay, right.
But it is also possible, because of the fact that it's a private driveway, that they won't do rubbish pickup for, for the town.
They can request it, and while they're going through the ZBA, they can request it, whether it gets approved or not, it's up there.
Exactly, right. Be up to DPW.
I just have a question on that. How many trash cans would there be out there on...
Be quite a bit, quite a bit.
Yeah.
Thirty-six, at least.
Yeah, right, times two, perhaps.
Thirty-six at least. So, in my development, we have one big, like dumpster. It's a, it's a development similar, I don't know, kind of. We have one bigger dumpster that fits a lot more, and trash pickup is private, and it comes every two weeks. So, it could be something like that, so it's not small trash cans. It could be one, like, bigger dumpster that the trash pickup actually supplies to each unit, and it, of course, is incorporated in the cost of the private trash pickup.
People would have to wheel their trash cans down to the dumpster.
No, just at the front ear unit, and they come down the driveway, and they pick it up at each unit. So, it limits the amount of trash cans that have to be...
That's the way we handle on commercial properties on Main Street. The tenants have a dump, and Covosa or somebody comes in and takes them away every week.
Right.
And they're, I don't see how you could take thirty-six barrels to the end of the street.
No, it would, it would most likely be down the driveway.
Trash day'd be interesting.
Sandwich Road would be interesting.
Again, Tom?
Is there a minimum distance that a home should be from, like, Sandwich Road? Because that's forty, forty-five miles an hour. Is there a distance, a structure?
It's thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet?
Yeah, and they're only twenty...
They're twenty-three point two.
I think it's twenty-three point one, yeah. Yeah, so that's one of the waivers they've requested.
So, that's one of their waivers, right?
So, that's actually one of the components that we wanted to cover with you folks is, you know, the ZBA is looking for input, especially on the waiver requests. And so, Tom, to your question, is the board comfortable with this type of setback being less than what is typically required?
Is anybody in favor of...
No.
No.
Nope.
No one's comfortable.
No one's.
Do we have the list of waivers?
Yes, in fact, it's shown on the screen. So, they are requesting a waiver for occupancy permits.
Do we have a...
I, I, we're not going to get into that one. The use table, you know, that's an easy one. It's, it, you know, right now, we maybe only allow one structure per lot. They're asking for thirty-six, or technically seventeen, structures. The maximum lot coverage, as Melinda covered before, so level of comfort in allowing the proposed structure lot coverage at twenty-two point eight percent. And then, as she mentioned, the parking structures and all pavement at forty-nine point three. Are there any concerns with those numbers above what's allowed?
Well, the paving, obviously.
Yeah.
Which would mean fewer units. So, any other, any other questions or comments?
Is there any, enough provision made for parking for visitors?
Yes.
This is sort of like a, a support density, and they have quite a lot of parking for visitors, but I don't see where that would be here. Have I missed it?
So, there are twenty-two guest parking spaces. I don't believe on the plans, they've, they've designated where those are, but on...
So, they have.
Oh, they have, great.
Yep, so each, each unit has their own garage and space in front of the garage to park their required cars. Those, those spaces that you see around the area of the, the driveway throughout the neighborhood, those are the guest parking spaces.
I was wrong.
Storage space, so, I mean, they have a garage, so they could store stuff in the garage, too.
Yeah, true.
Yep.
So, they're not totally without storage space, all having a garage. There's, they could hang stuff on the wall, a bike here or there, a few, few things.
It's what they do in California. No one has any storage, and they all have garages filled with stuff.
I have one more question.
Sure.
The waiver process, I mean, not the waiver process, the lip process. Right now, your new position, you kind of control all the boards that negotiate the lip, right? This is, this is a friendly forty B.
Correct.
And this is coming to us, the zoning folks are getting ready to approve this if they let them put it on paper. This is going forward, right?
They're getting ready to hear it.
Hear it.
Yes, they haven't even opened the hearing yet.
So, they haven't had a review at all? So, we see it before they have a hearing?
Well, it's part of the referral process, so just like your application.
All right, so they just want to hear what we say, and then they make up their own mind.
Exactly.
Okay, I, I just wanted to get the process right.
Got it.
So, we're not the decision-makers. We give opinions to them, and they are the board that grids the...
Exactly.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, Pat?
We have no indication of what kind of heat they're using.
Okay.
Okay, they've got a mechanical room there.
Okay.
Is that mechanical room going to house an oil tank?
Would you prefer, it sounds like net zero, so you would prefer electric heat and cooling?
Heat pump.
Heat pumps? Okay.
There's got to be some kind of, no, I don't know...
They only work if you have solar panels.
Bingo, and also they have a...
Well, if you only have a heat pump, you need a backup source. If you have solar panels and a heat pump, you're good to go.
Well, also, heat pumps, they've improved them some, but I don't know the minimum temperature that it will go down to that they will actually heat the home.
Right, so they lose their efficiency as it gets older.
As the temperature goes down, they do lose their efficiency.
Yeah, I know. Supposedly, ours will heat to twenty, no. The other ones supposedly would heat to forty, no.
Yeah.
So, when we're looking at the construction details and how they're going to cheap out on so many things, they're not going to have the kind of insulation in there that they need.
There's codes, they have to meet the codes.
Okay.
The only way you can do it is with a, a super tight house.
That's right.
And new construction. We've got R twenty-five in the walls. You've got R fifty in the ceiling, R thirty in the, underneath. All the windows are super tight. You've got a air exchange system. That's the only way heat pumps will, will really be efficient.
Correct.
The question is, if you don't have solar panels, then you're paying for that electricity. It's just like having electric heat in the house, which is very expensive. It's just like having electric heat in the house, which is very expensive. The solar panels offset that cost. But, uh, there will be times where, uh, a house will, even if it's super insulated, will struggle to...
Right.
To maintain the heat.
And so my comment is, if it's gonna be oil heat, I don't want that on the first floor of my home, an oil tank.
Well, we'll find out what the heat's gonna be.
Absolutely.
Or just recommend that, you know, it'd be heat pump.
And, and they have to meet the energy code no matter what.
Yeah.
So they can't get a building permit or occupancy without meeting the energy code, which is getting stricter every year.
It is.
Any other questions or comments?
So going through the waivers again, uh, we're not gonna deal with the occupancy, uh, the use table. Uh, I'd say, uh, no to that. I'd say no to the maximum lot coverage waiver. Uh, the setback waiver is a no and, uh, waiving the site plan review by us is a no.
Yeah, so, um, the planning board waivers here, the Article Two, which is supposed to be Article Three, Chapter three hundred nine through twelve, those are the requirements of the site plan submission.
Yeah.
We can walk through those with you if you'd like. Um, I can, you know, walk through that on the screen. Um, I haven't had a chance to look through those, those items. Um, but the, I just wanna go back to the use table item. So they're, they're essentially asking for a waiver to allow them to put more than one structure on the site. So...
Oh, just on the site.
Exactly.
Okay. Cause they haven't divided into lots?
They have not.
Okay. Okay.
Cause of rentals.
Yes.
Right.
So they wouldn't have to come for site plan review, that's just the site plan details that are required.
So let me, let me get there, cause I think it's an important component. So it's three hundred dash nine through twelve. Well, maybe it is. So, uh, yeah, so when I initially looked at this, I was anticipating it being the site plan filing requirements, um, but they have referenced, um, site plan review by the planning board. So what we can do is we can follow up with the ZBA and make sure that that reference is accurate, because again, that wouldn't apply. This is a comprehensive permit that wouldn't come before the, the planning board at, at any point. It would always be with the zoning board of appeals. So we'll just make sure that we understand that waiver correctly.
Okay. Everybody all set? Okay, so, uh, my comments would be, uh, don't we have a bylaw that a road is supposed to be a certain distance away from another road?
Yes.
And they're right across the street from a triangular intersection here, Hatchville Road. Do you need any kind of waiver for that? Or is this considered a driveway?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's considered a driveway and it's an existing driveway now.
Yeah.
So I think that would be a little murky.
Okay. My second question is, the drainage that we see, uh, next to the leaching field for the septic?
Yes.
That's gonna be a swale?
Yeah, they, they call it a bioretention basin, if I've got that right. Sorry, went right past it. Let me get there. So they call it bioretention area, subsurface infiltration system.
So how deep is, how deep is it, first of all?
I'm sorry?
How deep?
It's hard to read here. Uh, yeah. I cannot read that. It looks like eighteen inches, but I don't think that that's accurate.
Can you read it if you look at the screen?
Did it say eighteen inches, Beehive Great lowest opening?
Maybe.
Jed, if you read it, can you read it there?
It says eighteen inches.
Eighteen inches?
Beehive Great. Elevation fifty...
Bottom elevation's fifty-eight.
Usually around four feet, usually about four feet deep.
That looks like fifty-eight bottom elevation and rim elevation at, I'm a, I think that's...
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine?
Inches.
That's elevation.
Well, yeah, you can see it here.
Fifty-nine point five.
So here's fifty-nine. Here's the contour fifty-nine. Here's sixty. So it looks like the bottom, so it's, it's roughly two feet.
Okay. Two feet?
Yes. That's the way I would read it. These are one-foot contours.
And what goes inside of it? Stones, grass, combination?
So what we can do...
They're usually a, a great breeding ground for mosquitoes.
Let's see. Just looking really quickly to see if we've got the basin. So it looks like this is the drainage basin. So it'd just be loam and seed.
I'm sorry?
Loam and seed. So you have some seed mix here, uh, dirt on the edge.
The, uh, the, the plan on sheet four references stone as well, though.
Too close together.
Stones, too.
Yeah.
They usually put stones in them, big stones. Anyway, I would prefer to see a regular drainage, underground drainage system.
Okay.
It's healthier for everyone. It's a little more expensive, but, and it's out of sight, out of mind and another little area for people to play in.
Rather than that retention area?
Yes.
Yep.
Then, um, uh, we've had some really good comments here. My final comment would be that I think that buildings fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen should be removed. They should put a circular turnaround there for snowplow, garbage, fire trucks, et cetera.
So these four units...
Those four buildings should not be there and there should be...
Certainly.
A turnaround.
So that's eight units, right? The duplexes?
Correct.
So we're saying, take out eight units.
For, for the, the group I just mentioned, fire department.
Yep.
Snowplow, garbage. I also need to head into that post office, Amazon, FedEx.
Gotcha. So four units removed, do this more...
Four buildings.
Eight units.
It's a terrible, it's a terrible site plan design, terrible. It's just, it's just...
Stuff is there.
It's cluttered. And it's not gonna be, the traffic's gonna be terrible. I, I, I just, I live in a neighborhood where there's a dead-end street and we have a nice turnaround, it works beautifully. Big vehicles go right around and out, snowplows, everything.
Okay.
Otherwise, then they're trying to, trying to make it work and beep and it's just gonna be terrible.
Sure.
Whoever lives there is gonna wish they didn't.
Cause of all the turnaround.
So hopefully, nobody lives there.
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha.
So that's the end of my comments. Okay?
Maybe a, maybe a lip program, but I think this board is giving it a thumbs down.
Well, we have some lip, too.
Thumbs sideways.
I know we give some lip.
Always refer improvement.
Exactly. That's why we're the planning board.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Next, we have forty-eight Benjamin Neis forty-B ZBA referral.
I will have to recuse myself.
No leave, though.
How do you get to do that?
Bob, you can listen, you just don't, you just don't need to give any comments.
Okay, so I consider...
Yeah, cause we're not voting on...
Okay. I'll just sit here and keep my mouth shut.
You can make some comments.
Okay. So before I get into the plans, I'm gonna summarize like I did before the last, with the last application. And we'll vote to the overall plan, though. All right, so this is a Habitat for Humanity project. It's a fully, all affordable, um, fourteen single-family homes, um, a total of thirty-nine bedrooms and their application states that there will be basements as the site allows. I'm assuming that's a topography reason.
Some of them will walk out.
Okay. So it equals one point eight units per acre, um, even though they are in their own sub, individual lots. But the whole acreage as a total is seven and a half acres. Um, there's gonna be a shared innovative septic system. There's two open space areas. There's an undisturbed buffer area of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, a little over that square feet of an undisturbed buffer. And then there's also twenty, almost twenty-four thousand square feet for the wastewater and, um, soil, what is it? Soil absorption, absorption system?
SAS.
So they're all affordable. As I said, there's gonna be four two-bedroom ranches. There's gonna be four three-bedroom ranches, five three-bedroom capes, and one four-bedroom colonial. Um, the four two-bedroom ranches are going to be one seventy-four, four hundred. That's the rate, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred. Um, and then the other units, um, which would be ten, um, are gonna range between sixty and eighty percent AMI. And, and there's a range for each of the types of house there are. Um, if you'd like, I can go through that. That's for the four, three-bedroom ranch. It ranges from about two hundred and thirty-five thousand to two hundred and sixty-two thousand. For the three-bedroom cape, it's about one ninety-five thousand to two hundred and sixty-two thousand. And for the four-bedroom colonial, it ranges from two hundred and eleven almost to two eighty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-three thousand. So those are the sixty to eighty percent ranges for each of the different types of dwellings.
What's the sale prices or that? That's incredible.
So the subdivision road, it's going to be a road. Um, it's, um, one thousand and fifty-seven feet. Um, and I'm assuming from the drawing that that's actually the whole distance traveled around the circle?
It is.
Okay. Um, so they have asked for a, a pretty long list of waivers, um, including density limitations, uh, minimum lot dimensions such as lot area, frontage, and width. And there is a handout in, in your packet that breaks down each lot and what the dimensional requirements are for each lot and if they meet them and if they don't and what they're gonna need a waiver for, for each individual lot. The overall, they will all need some sort of, uh, dimensional waiver.
They're all very small lots.
Yes. Um, they're about eight thousand square feet, a little bit over eight thousand square feet. Another waiver is the setback from the street for the houses. Um, there's a setback for signs during the construction process of the, um, for the site. And then there's the waiver from the landscape plan. And then there's a waiver for many parts of the definitive plan, a perlop, such as, um, the length of the road, um, sidewalks, grass plots, and street trees, and street lights. So that's an overview. And then, as, now I can just go through the, the plan with you. Um, as you can see, this is the site plan. This is Benjamin Neis right here. And the proposed road comes in and loops around. And this is, this is the area that's gonna be a vegetative buffer. Um, also in the packet here, which was kind of an interesting addition, um, it looks like the Habitat, Habitat for Humanity reached out to the neighbors and they compiled a list of questions and answers that the neighbors had, um, or at least the community had. Um, and those are in your packet, um, as well.
They don't have this here, but that's it.
All right, so, let's see. So the subs, uh, the wastewater, the septic, innovative septic system is going to be in the center area here.
It's gonna be, what, a Nitro or Nitrex?
I don't know if it's, if it specifies.
I read it already. It's, it's one or the other.
Jed, do you know what page that's on?
I don't, offhand, but I do know it's one of the other...
Yeah.
...components.
The reason I say that, that's, that's the model that the health department's gonna be recommending for.
Okay.
It's the, it's the most effective.
Oh, Nitrox.
Nitrox, yes.
Yep.
Yep.
So they did comment that, um, a large part of the property is mapped in the natural heritage and they have been working with, um, the Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, um, and conservation with, um, regards to the eastern box turtle, which is, um, the endangered species that is found on the site. Um, the landscaping, they have made a point that there is a natural buffer to preserve, um, a lot of the trees. And they will incorporate tolerant, tolerant plants, flowers, small trees, and shrubs on the site. So I can go into the, um, the house design now?
Why don't we do some questions first?
Sure.
If you're all right with that.
Mm-hmm.
Charlotte?
I don't have a question.
And Bob, you don't have any questions or...
We can't.
I can't.
Jim?
None so far.
Pat?
I do not have any so far. It's my first look at it.
Okay. Paul?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, I was surprised here's a one, four-bedroom. And, uh, was there rationale why there's a much larger building in this complex?
Hmm. There might be. No, I don't see it off the...
It's a colonial, so it's totally different than the others.
Yeah, I think, I think the intent was to just create...
A mix.
A, a mix of structures.
Remember, these are homeownership, not rentals.
Right.
It's homeownership. So it could be someone with three children or two children.
Well, if a volunteer's constructing, it's a lot easier to use the same design for all of the, the three-bedroom. They don't have a new one in there.
If you have three children, yeah.
That's their choice. I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's a good point. Any other questions or comments?
No, I think it's a good layout.
Tom?
Um, I don't think so. Um, it backs up to an old cranberry bog. Does anything kick in? Having a cranberry bog that close?
I think it's part, it's part of the, uh, the Augusta property that was purchased and, uh, three-hundred committee...
I'll write the fifty-two acres.
Has purchased the majority of this and, and when they went to CPC, I was on the CPC at the time and they were looking for funding to purchase it. And we indicated that, uh, we felt there should be affordable housing there also. So they cut out this portion of it to make for affordable. It's a hundred percent affordable.
Okay.
It's a really, uh, a great combination.
It was a partnership, right?
Partnership, yes.
So it was originally just over fifty-five acres and they came before us not that long ago and, and subdivided it through an A and R process for the seven and a half acre lot to, um, to develop this.
So I, I have some comments.
Sure.
I, I went, uh, went to the ZBA's office and looked at the, at the full site plan today. And these are basically less than nine thousand square feet per lot. And, uh, they have a fair amount of open space. I know the terrain is different, but they certainly could've put more homes there than, take a look at this, as opposed to the previous applicant. Not every square foot is housing. Uh, I think they've come up with a really nice design for the road that, look, it's a nice circular turnaround. There'd be no issues with, uh, deliveries or snow removal or anything of that nature. And, uh, a hundred percent affordable, it's just can't be any nicer than that. And that's my comment.
Good. So now I will go through, through the architectural plans, uh, for each. Um, so this is the two-bedroom ranch. This looks like the same style that maybe was used for Willett Way, um, in East Falmouth or Rockaway area, um, full basement. And then there are two bedrooms.
Do you know how many square feet that is?
Uh, yes, it is. Uh, yes, it is. I think it tells somewhere. Pretty sure. It listed somewhere in the application.
I'm looking. I'll, I'll try to find it. You can move on.
It's nine hundred and seventy two square feet.
So this is seventy two feet bigger than an ADU the state now allows.
Correct.
Amazing.
And not to dovetail too much into the meeting that we had yesterday. But this is the kind of home that the starter home bylaw looks to create. A single family home that isn't twenty five hundred square feet to three thousand square feet. But modest at capped at eighteen hundred and fifty square feet, which is actually quite big for a family of four. So it's just an example of what can be built.
Not to go further into it, but a little bit, but the starter home thing is it came through as a recommendation for a zone.
Correct.
In fact, Falmouth is filled with houses just like this. This isn't new for Falmouth. But it does give us a good picture of potential ADUs.
Well, the only difference is, is that this has a full basement. So I think two meetings ago, we talked about. How ADUs, if they wanted to have a full basement, then they would have to have a smaller house because the basement is part of the square footage.
Or less than seven feet.
Right, so exactly. So they'd have to have a, not a full basement or a smaller ADU. I think what we said four fifty because it would have to be.
It's a nice footprint.
But this is, yes. Let me know if I'm going too fast because I'm just going to scroll to the next design.
Just a comment, it's, it's a heck of a lot bigger than most of the houses that were built in the forties in Maravista.
Right.
On very small lots and market rate lots in there. Those were starter homes back then. There was hundreds of them. We're, we're actually tearing them down now and putting bigger ones, but.
But except for the price, they're still starter homes.
Right.
It's easier to clean.
Yeah.
So this is the three bedroom ranch and that is twelve hundred fifty six square feet. And it's very similar to the two bedroom. Again, a full basement and then the three bedrooms are on one floor again with the living and dining room area and the kitchen.
Is it one bath or a bath and a half?
Just one bathroom. Uh, no, bath and a half. Yep, this is right here. And then the next design is the three bedroom cape. These are twelve hundred seventy six square feet. There's two bathrooms. So it looks like this. Full basement. This is the first floor with one bedroom. Looks like a full bath, kitchen, living and dining room area. And then the second floor with two bedrooms and another full bathroom. And that's the back, has little door. All right, and the last is the one, one, the only four bedroom colonial. It is fifteen hundred sixty eight square feet and it has two bathrooms. So again, full basement. Bedroom on the first floor. With a full bath and then three bedrooms on the second floor with a full bath.
Yep, very nice.
Remarkable. Real design amazingly priced.
Can be done. But do we have a positive referral?
Yes.
No comments other than that? No? Okay.
No issues with any of the waivers that were requested?
No.
Okay.
It can be done.
Sure.
That's great.
Okay, thank you, Melinda. Next, we'd like to have the planning department report, please.
So as you know, we've been very busy with our zoning amendments. Board closed the hearing. We are at your next meeting, going to bring forward your recommendations for your voting. On those. We'll also provide you with some explanations. So essentially verbiage that you would be putting into the warrant. So we've been working on that. Paul will be happy to know that we've, we're very close to finalizing the Shiverick's Pond sign. So what we're looking to do is replicate some of the existing signage that's on the Coonamessack Greenway. And other 300 committee sites and conservation sites, the Little Palm Place. And give it the same sort of style. What we're trying to do is, you know. Give a theme to all these really nice recreational sites and open space areas in town. So we're very close to finalizing that. We just need to figure out the exact location where we want to put that. Engineering division's very close to doing a final walkthrough with the construction company that constructed the platform. So almost at the end. Melinda and I have been working very hard on the community play space request for proposals or the procurement process. For those of you who don't know, it's a CPC application for basically an all inclusive, multi generational playground to be located at Goodwill Park. So fully accessible play space that would be located right next to the existing place. And so we, the town was given or awarded approximately seventy five thousand dollars in CPC funds. We now have to go out to procurement to select a designer to design the facility and then we can get a cost estimate. Move forward in construction and whatnot. So we've been working on that. Town property analysis, that just continues on. That's an ongoing weekend project for me. It's involving a lot of analysis of the existing town properties that we currently have on the books. To try and figure out if there are places that we could dispose of property for affordable housing, just like the three sites. The four sites that were released by town meeting in November. So that is ongoing and then we met, Melinda and I met with the Cape Cod Commission this week, last week.
Last week.
To discuss the Mr. Cod district design guidelines. So those are coming together. We're providing them input on some of the sites within the district. That are good examples, in our opinions, that have good setbacks. Both side and front, have good landscaping features. And so we'll shortly be, be able to at least give you an assessment of where we are with that. I'd like to give you a presentation and sort of give you a sort of a taste of where that is. And then offer an opportunity for you to give us some locations that you think are real winners in the Mr. Cod district. So we can highlight those within the, the design guidelines. Part of that, Charlotte, you'll be happy to hear is, is lighting. We're really focused on trying to define dark sky compliant lighting. Give examples of what that looks like, some good examples that are packs on the wall of buildings. Goose neck lighting that comes off the front, pole lighting that's pedestrian level. Things that we want to create within the, within the Mr. Cod district, so.
And sign guidelines.
And sign.
For commercial developments in the area.
Right. So there's a lot that goes into it and the Cape Cod Commission's been very patient with us because we're extremely busy. And then lastly is permitize, so our online permitting platform. It's been a success story for the building department and others. And so I'm working with other departments to get them online, just like the planning board is currently. So a lot of work going on currently. But that's the report for the planning department.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So. Committee reports. Charlotte, you have a committee report?
Yeah, the, the short term rental group has met twice and we had a presentation. We had a presentation from Provincetown that I think I already told you about.
Yes.
We're, we're meeting again and we'll have a presentation by the, the set of, by Plymouth. Because they have the bylaws that the, we admire the most so far. So that we've used them as a model to put together a side by side of what we currently propose, did propose last year that failed town meeting. And where we think we should move in light of what we've learned so far. It was kind of like a progress report. And we're really adding to what we had said before. What we're adding is a lot of definitions because that whole area has turned up a lot of new kinds of things. About brokers and ways of interacting and more specification. So it's been pretty active and we're hoping to get to this, not to November, but to the spring town meeting with it.
Are you finding a lot of other communities that are working on the same?
No, so far on the Cape, there are four that already have regulations and then there's us. The two islands haven't quite settled on what they're going to do, but it's still a live issue there. But what is happening, because I think I told you that Provincetown find, found that they did not have nearly the number of short term rentals. That they thought they had, just because of the way they reported. So it, it kind of lowered the heat under the whole issue. And we'll probably find the same thing. We don't have quite as many as we thought. What, what they're thinking is maybe ADUs are going to heat it up again, but maybe not. But no, we don't see activity in the other towns yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other committee reports?
Just a question, aren't ADUs, other short term rentals prohibited from ADUs?
Excuse me?
Yes.
Their, ADUs can't be used as short term rentals.
That's right. The way the law is written now, they may not.
Yeah, so.
The lady in Provincetown felt that it could be a problem. The people who find, it creates the biggest problem for the hotels, the ADUs. Yeah. It just lowers the number of people who need a hotel room.
If they were renting out ADUs.
But they're not supposed to.
They're using the ADUs, it was just never thought about.
They're not supposed to be used for seasonal rentals though, right?
Right.
Right.
They're not.
So it's only a problem if they're violating the law and no one catches it?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
And the, the person who's coming to speak to us next, you might want to tune into it. It'll be on FCTV, I think. Has found that monitoring it and enforcing it in Plymouth so far hasn't been a burden. And she has the same size planning department, no, health department that we do. With much bigger population.
That's interesting.
It was. So it's not the problem. It's been made out to be. Here.
So far.
So far.
Thank you. Tom?
For anybody that wants to attend tomorrow at the Rec Department, six P M, it's a community forum on a noise bylaw update. The town manager and town council will be there. And just looking for community input. Right after that will be the recreation department meeting and then the next day on Thursday will be our CPC meeting. We're going to go over the April two thousand twenty six CP fund project applications.
Paul?
Okay, I'll just give a short report for the Cape Cod Commission. We're having a hearing on Thursday at three o'clock, a Zoom, Zoom meeting. And then we're gonna take a vote, the full commission will take a vote on the solar farm at the Cape Cod Country Club. That's proposed. So first we're gonna have a hearing. If anybody wants to testify or listen in and ask any questions, they're welcome to do that. And I'll just give you a little update on it. The parcel is about one hundred and thirty nine acres. And the solar array is gonna entail about fifty nine acres of that. And the rest will be open space and recreational space. And they're gonna have, the applicant is proposing forty three thousand and fifty six solar panels on the site. And they're gonna be tilted. Combination, I'm sure, but three feet at the lower end, sixteen feet at the upper end. And they're gonna fence in the areas around it with sixteen thousand five hundred and fourteen feet. Of chain link fencing. Seven feet high with six inches underneath for rabbits and squirrels and small deer to get through, so. So, but we're gonna, we're gonna have the hearing at three o'clock and then the full commission's gonna vote on the recommendation.
Have the Butters turned out?
I'm sorry?
Have the Butters come to speak to the commission?
There were some letters from Butters that were in favor of it. I, I don't think many people realize the size and the scope of this project really, not yet anyway. But if it gets approved, then it comes to this board for site plan approval.
I, I know some of the Butters and they would rather have the solar farm than, you know, one hundred and thirty nine houses.
Well, that's, that's one of the concerns, yes, that, that it may be a housing development if it's not a solar development.
Didn't, haven't we reviewed this or talked about a few years ago? This seems, so we've kind of had the same argument. I think somebody came up with a number of houses that could be built out there.
They did.
Right.
And that's why I brought up last night, now, okay, if they're all duplexes and have ADUs, that would multiple by four.
Right.
Yeah.
So there, I mean, there's a, there's an argument.
Cooperating the city.
And, and what I remember when we talked about it, it was different leadership and whatnot, but we actually thought it was a. A good idea because in twenty years, doesn't it all revert back to the town?
Yes.
So it adds conservation land.
Well, that, that has not been agreed to yet.
Well, that's what was proposed last time.
It's a concept. It's not been agreed to yet. Nothing is.
They're, they're not proposing that anymore?
I didn't say that. It has not been agreed to. After, presuming it gets approved by the Cape Cod Commission on Thursday. The decision will get written up. It'll come to this board for site plan review. And, and then the selectmen will make an agreement probably on ownership and terms and conditions. And decommissioning and, I mean, there's a lot more to it than I had mentioned here. This, this is going to be. A massive industrial site, really is what it's going to turn out to be, so.
Right.
It's a project beyond what you could comprehend. You have to see the plans and, and have a little bit of vision. But anyway, it's going to come back to this board and then the selectmen will make some sort of an agreement with the ownership of the land. Or not ownership, leasing, not leasing, et cetera, et cetera.
Can I ask just one other question?
Sure, of course.
They'll pay the town taxes, right?
I'm sorry?
They'll pay the town taxes.
If they own it, they'll pay taxes.
Right, and what?
The town owns it, they'll pay rent.
They, oh, they usually pay. An estimated, a, a number instead of taxes. When we did the solar project, there was a tax payment that was built into it. Every month, I mean, just like real estate taxes. It's in lieu of taxes. And it's a, it's a scheduled payment to make up for that. And when we did the solar project, that was one of the income streams that got identified as a benefit from the town. It was pretty big money. It was, they had rent and real estate taxes. What do they call it? A pilot program?
Yep, payment in lieu of taxes.
And that's usually negotiated, at least it was in the contracts that we did with Citizens Energy when I was doing that stuff.
Well, again, I think something is going to be determined on who owns the site. And that has not been determined yet. So, and, and there's a lot to it. As, as I said. Twenty years from now, thirty five, forty years from now, it's got to be dis, decommissioned. You have to have agreements to, to that and guarantees, bonds, et cetera, et cetera. There's a long way to go on this, really. And, and, but anyway, I don't want to get too deep into it. I just wanted to let you know that we're having a meeting Thursday at three o'clock. Anyone's welcome to attend the meeting.
Fully virtual, right?
Fully virtual.
Yep. Included in your packet is the announcement. And so if anyone's watching from home and wants to tune in, you can just Google the Cape Cod Commission. Click on their upcoming meetings on the top panel and you can scroll down and, and find that Zoom link, so.
Right, and everyone is welcome.
Yep.
So next we have future agenda items and Pat?
I thought we had a very successful joint meeting between the two boards last night, the planning board and the select board. And I would like to see our board, I hate to say rehash it, but in a way, yes. So that we can come up with where we think we should put our initiatives. To come in line with what was discussed as much as we can. And I definitely, you guys were sitting, listening while we were doing. And I really would look forward to your input as to what you think would be the next most valuable first step or first steps. And even. Put your ideas before the town manager or the select board. But I don't know whether you want to do it at our next meeting while it's still fresh.
We do.
Okay, good.
So we'll have the same agenda items, topics that we, we are going to discuss.
I would assume so. Yes, and as you recall, the, the first one kind of was a touchstone for the other items too. Because some could happen and some couldn't happen the way we are now.
Would that be open to public discussion as well?
I don't even have any thought about that right now.
Yeah, yeah, I would think it would be, you'd want to start with a planning board discussion.
Yeah.
And then, you know, you can move into something that would involve the public. Don't forget too, is a, a large conversation that you want to be able to have, probably in conjunction with this. Is the whole idea of ADUs and going beyond the first one. So what sort of guardrails do we want to establish or would you like to establish for the second, third, et cetera? Whatever cap you'd like to put on it. And then how that interplays with Jim's, to your, to your point earlier, how that interplays with potentially allowing duplexes in certain areas, right? So I think it's a, it's a larger conversation.
So basically a debriefing and a brainstorming session.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could you get some, I know I raised a lot of questions, but really didn't get you in, in a position we can answer them. But I'd like to know what the state's thinking about those questions. Does one become four? I mean, i- i- if, if they, if they're not preventing it, that leaves the possibility for it to happen.
Right.
And that's really what I was bringing out. And then what the heck does that do to our water protection plans?
Right.
I just, I'm not against these things. I just, I don't know if they've thought it through. It just seems to be a really massive change and when, when you ask a question and you don't get an answer, you don't really know what to think.
It's tough, yeah.
I don't have to pin you down, but you, you don't know the answers to that either. They're all like.
No, and they, what comes out of this may be that we have to get our state reps active on the state level to change certain things. Because individual communities are individual. You can't put us all in the same box and shake us out to look the same.
They're also, from Beacon Hill, they're also thinking greater. They're also, from Beacon Hill, they're also thinking greater Boston, which is all on the sewer.
I know.
That's, right.
And down here, they're saying, oh, no, you can't add anything into the sewer, but oh, you've got to develop it.
Well, then, how it affects with the flow neutral bylaw, too.
Right.
I had the privilege of getting their first three flow neutral bylaw permits that the town ever issued. They actually forgot about doing it for a while, and then all of a sudden, they woke up and said, oh, my God, we're supposed to do it? So, I mean, I don't think it's been thought through. I don't want to, I didn't want to come across as negative as them, I just really just asking a lot of questions, and we really, you weren't in a position where you could answer.
Yeah, so I think, you know, with the board's permission, I think what we would, we would like to do is just have it as a discussion item on each one of your agendas moving forward. If there's time at the end of the meeting, depending on, so it would just be a standing item, where we can just start to chip away at some of these conversations, because I think it's a long conversation about, you know, as I mentioned last night, the local comprehensive plan, we're just about to find out whether or not we've got funding to do that.
Yeah.
So, that really, in my opinion, is going to set the stage for these types of conversations, because that's an opportunity to go out to the public and say, what do you guys think about this, X, Y, Z, et cetera?
Well, there's another reason that I want to keep this alive, too, is that Melinda remembers how I tried to push for these meetings, and the Select Board would always find a reason not to. And so, Bob Mascali is the first chairman of the Select Board who is making it happen, even though it's required twice a year by our charter.
By charter, yeah.
And so, they haven't been happening. And I would like to, I guess applaud his effort, would be the way I'd say it, by continuing the discussion and keeping it alive.
Yeah, and, you know, I think one of the things, dare I say it, and, you know, I'm going to turn this way, because I have a feeling that I might get blocked, but I think a Saturday session might be, might be in order.
That's the way we used to do it.
Yeah, we did. We used to do it that way.
We have an opportunity to not have applicants before us, and you have, you know, two or three hours to really dive into some of these topics.
Besides the donuts and coffee.
Let's have, let's have a first round of this first, though.
For sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Before we get into that part.
Not go crazy.
Correct.
We had giant Saturday meetings with three or four boards. We used to be at Falmouth Academy.
Yeah.
No, there was one, I think, at Falmouth Academy. Were there two or three? Okay. Maybe I could only attend one.
And it was Ms. Bragg, I think, who initiated them and led them, I think.
It's a big undertaking.
But they were a lot of boards, and you're not as effective, I think, with pulling that many in.
We'll work on this first, though.
Yeah.
Yep.
Paul?
Yeah, there were, the last two meetings were, what, three years ago and two years ago, so it's been a while.
That's been a while.
I had two items, and one was a follow-up for the joint meeting last night, and Pat explained that, someone mentioned it, but I think that's very important. The other thing I'd like to say, if it's appropriate, is with the new community development organization, I understand it's going to be a real organization within Town Hall. So, when appropriate, it'd be nice to know when we come to Town Hall where to find the Planning Department. Whoever that's going to be.
One day, it'll just not be there.
All I know is I was down before to help.
Little breadcrumbs.
And Scott referred to Jed as his boss.
Okay.
That's, that was a different, there you go.
Well.
So, a lot of change.
Yeah.
A lot of change.
I would think the department head needs a private office, there's no question about that. The only private office upstairs is ZBA. Whether they'd be willing to give that up or not, I don't know. That's beyond my pay grade, and it may not be appropriate to do it in the next meeting, but at some point in time, it'd be nice to know what's going on and how we find the Planning Department in the future.
Jed's going to be taken care of, don't worry. We're all looking forward to it.
We are working on a relocation plan. We are. And I'll say this, because, you know, we're slowly working on it in our spare time, me, myself, and I, no, I'm kidding. We are looking to move over next to ZBA, because the vision is to create a regulatory environment in that area where Planning Board and ZBA are right next to each other. So, we're trying to find spaces within Town Hall to distribute the staff that's currently up there. I think we're in a place where we can make that happen, so in a few months, we might be.
I just want to put a little two cents in here. A private office, I think Jed, you've done a really good job of surrounding yourself with people that can answer questions, and to pack you away in a corner and then not have the staff that is integrated to helping everybody from a customer point of view, because I have to go up there and deal with them. I really appreciate your, that there's two or three other people that actually can try to answer the question, because you can't handle it all, and I just, I think you're doing a good job spreading it out amongst your staff, and I'd like you to be, continue to do that. That's a customer service question, because I have to deal with them from my side.
I might add, it's not a top priority, but it's something I'd like to see down the road, not next meeting, but it's a future meeting.
Tom? Okay.
I have two announcements, if I may.
Let me finish first.
Okay.
I had a meeting with staff earlier today, and I asked them if they would please start making a list or give us an idea of a lot of buildable vacant lots there are in town. If we're going to talk about duplexes, triplexes, how much land is actually available, and where could we, as a board, design for them to go or not go? So, it'll be a while before they can get that to us, but. Okay, so two weeks, great.
Two weeks, piece of cake.
Okay, you want to say something, Jim?
Well, I believe that question, believe it or not, can be, you could ask a question to the computer system and have it do the assessments records, and it'll give you the answer.
Yeah, that's why I say a piece of cake.
Yeah, I believe it's available.
So, I'll stop by Jim's office tomorrow and pick it up.
Yeah, I'll do it. I don't get paid to do that, but I have done it before. I wrote a simple question saying, how many general residential properties are there that were 12,000 square feet or bigger? And I got an, I got an answer right away.
Yeah.
And I'll just point out that a three-bedroom septic system in three units fits on 12,000 feet of general residential. So, it's the density, you got to, when you're, anyways, it can be asked and answered by, especially with AI could probably do it.
I think we could do it right now.
I think we could do it right now. I just realized we could do it right now.
Which is scary, you know?
It is pretty scary.
But then, the human eye has to check the AI. Sometimes AI just answers because they want an answer, and it's not real.
Okay. General correspondence.
So, we have one. It really falls into an announcement slash general correspondence, for those of you who are interested, the Cape Cod Bridges Project, so the Sagamore Bridge Replacement Project will, they'll have an open house in Bourne on September 25th at the Bourne Veterans Memorial Community Center, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM. So, for those of you who follow the project, they just filed their draft environmental impact report, so that has a whole host of analyses as well as visuals, so there'll be an opportunity to learn more about what the Sagamore Bridge is going to look like whenever it's finished. So, near and dear to my heart. And more importantly, I forgot the drum roll, but you all have, hopefully, in your seats, new copies of the zoning bylaw. That is inclusive of all of the changes that have been made up to and including the November 2024 town meeting. So, we're very excited to hand that out. Please keep that at your bedside table, read it every evening, but it's yours to keep and take home.
There going to be a quiz?
There will be.
Okay. Has this been added to the computer version that we can look up, so it's now all up to date?
All up to date.
Paul?
Yeah, I just have a question. I attended the last meeting of the bridges.
Yeah.
It was basically a presentation with a lot of cards with no visual, no discussion at all, everyone there, consultants and everything. Is that the same kind of thing? Are they going to present the environmental impact statement, or are they just going to walk around and look at posters again?
I really don't know. I don't know the design of the event. I suspect it'll probably be very similar to what you saw, because they would anticipate a large crowd, but I can't, I don't know until I go.
It's very interesting, but I was expecting a little bit more of a presentation rather than just posters.
Yeah, right.
One more announcement is that next week, on Tuesday and Wednesday, is the One Cape Conference with the Cape Cod Commission. They put it on every year in St. Carwich. Jed and I will be attending one of the days, not both this year.
No, no. Registration, I think, is still open.
It is.
So, you can, if you're interested, register for the event. It's great, it's an opportunity to network with other folks on the Cape and learn about some of the really innovative things that people do.
What's the date of that?
Tuesday and Wednesday next week, so the 16th and 17th.
Of?
This month, next week.
Yep, there's a fee for it, but you're welcome to attend.
One item I just did want to bring to the board's attention is we do have two petitioners' articles, two zoning changes, so we'll be hearing those on October 14th, I believe. So, just keep that in mind, that we'll have presentations by the petitioners.
Excellent.
Hey, move to adjourn.
I just have one more question. When I searched the E-code for the word duplex in preparation for last night's meeting, I couldn't find it in the book.
Yeah.
It's two-family. They don't call it a duplex, they call it two-family.
Oh, okay, but that meeting, I thought, didn't the state call it duplex? I was confused about that, because in my definition, a duplex is two side-by-side units that are almost identical, and that's not what we're talking about. I didn't actually know what we're talking about in that state law last night. I'm done, but, so it's still not in here.
And definitions is still part of the recodification effort.